Good evening. It is 6:30 on Monday, August 22nd, and I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Smith? Mr. Burdy?
Here.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Kuhn?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Seeing that we've just started our meeting, we will forego the Agenda Item 2.01, which is a recess, and move to 3.01, which is public comments, for which I did not receive any documents for a public comment. So we're going to move right on to 4.01, which is the Winton Woods Teachers Association. Do we have a representative here tonight for the Winton Woods Teachers Association? I thought I seen her sitting out there. See if she wants to come in and have words. I just sent my other representative out, so we'll just...
Yeah, I was thinking.
I really apologize for that. That was just like a second. Soon as she stepped out of the room, I realized that was not the right person to go. It happens.
It happens.
Hi, did you... Okay. Hi, Mrs. James. We just wanted to acknowledge you as the Winton Woods Teachers Association rep. You just wanted to step up and say anything, or just hello, or...
I would just say hi.
Okay, okay.
I'm a person to speak in front of the microphone or anything, but hello.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, no problem at all. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Yes, yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is 4.02, which is the UPSE, and you have the mic.
Good evening, Madam Board President, Superintendent Smith, community members. We just wanted to say welcome back and have a safe and happy school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We always want to acknowledge our representatives because we respect the work that they do for us. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
It's been motioned.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith? Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation... or the Treasurer's Report, I'm sorry. The Treasurer's Report of the Financial Statements for July 2022. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, for the first month of our fiscal year of '22, we only had revenues of 1.9, obviously for both the year-to-date and for the month-to-date, and that was mostly state foundation. However, we did have month-to-date expenditures of 3.8. I would like to point out, though, that on the report, you will see approximately 6.9 million was committed for contracts for our coming school year. Just to share a little bit, about 2.8 million is for special ed instruction and support services. Approximately 2.1 million will be for maintenance contracts and for maintenance of the buildings, and approximately 1.2 million for instructional services for software and school supplies. So as you can see, right when we get started in the new fiscal year, we start issuing contracts and getting things ready for the next school year, and that's why I always have you adopt temporary appropriations until we get that final appropriations. Also, you can see the list of the... all the funds had approximately $28 million in all funds, and when you look at it, you can see which fund... which funds had how much. So that's basically a summary of the financial report for the month of July.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of July 2020 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation of Investments for July 2022.
Yes, for the month of July, the district earned $25,967, of which $18,142 was the general fund, and building funds were $7,825, for a total of $25,967 for July.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Seymour? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, the Reports of the Superintendent and School Reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. We're excited. Kids are back. They looked happy going in. A few of them, yeah.
Most of them.
And there were a lot of kids bringing their supplies, like in big boxes, so it was exciting. I did stop a dad who had a big suitcase, and I said, "This kid is supposed to go back home, like after, like, 3:00." So I don't know if you're bringing all of his stuff with him, or how this turned out. And the kid was like excited, like, "Hey, you don't know, I'm trying to get away from this guy as well." So, but we are... we're excited. We did hear... there were some issues with busing, but from what we heard last year to this year, folks, it is absolutely night and day. And we checked way across to see how far, you know, Winton, how far the cars were going down. Parents were smiling, they were excited, kids were excited. One of the things that we noticed that was slowing us down a little bit is parents taking these photo opportunities, their kids getting out, and they're posing with the kid, and I'm like, "Hey, Mom, you're holding us up. You got like all these poses with this child." But we were... I think the team here did an amazing job, and in the north campus, it was like clockwork. I mean, they had everything like it was supposed to be. And, you know, there are still some bumps in the road, so what I'd like to let you know is that Mr. Denny and I are going to just take some tours tomorrow and the rest of the week, and see if we can just kind of streamline it and make things work a lot easier and a lot safer and faster for parents. Doc, I'm going to just scroll on through with the eight, because these are just conversations.
That's fine, absolutely.
But the open enrollment... I'm going to send the board open enrollment information, because it's changing daily. And what I'd like to do is give you guys a full litany of where we are by the end of the week with our open enrolled students, as well as our regular enrollment. Right now, we're sitting at 4,104, but according to Ms. Bray, some of our numbers are not even... the numbers are as accurate as we have them, but there are still parents enrolling right now. The other thing is, some school districts do the opening... where the enrollment process onsite, that doesn't work. It just... I'm just telling you, it doesn't work. Where you don't have enough information, and then you have long lines of people trying to register in school. So one of the good parts about having the enrollment center located off-site is the best thing that you can do, because it gives parents a chance to just kind of work through it, instead of just standing there, and then all of a sudden, you have to go back for information. People don't want their kid to leave the school. So we're saying, once you get here, we've got it, but you have to go through some other processes to make it work. We are definitely still a New Tech Network District. People wonder, it's like, are we still New Tech? Yes, we sent a large entourage to Texas for training, and they've come back eager and excited about this whole New Tech experience, and so full speed ahead. Facilities update. Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Board.
Hey, you look like... Hold up. You look like somebody. Let me see. This guy just put my TV on the wall. This is the Geek Squad, wasn't it? You look like that guy.
This, or...
No, the whole little attire.
I shouldn't have gone with the skinny tie.
That looks pretty good, man. I like it.
The skinny tie messed it up.
I think I'll wear something like that tomorrow, minus the brace.
I would encourage that for sure. Well, thank you again. Good evening again, Board. Happy to share with you just a couple of quick updates on facilities, and then we'll touch base on the auction as well. There's a property auction. It's definitely worth mentioning. So the former intermediate school, we had renovation start last week, so we finally got contractors on site. That's Mark Spalding. Construction, as you recall, you approved that bid last month. They mobilized last week, and they've already completed the complete ceiling tear-out, that is the drop ceiling, ceiling grid, tiles, and the old... well, what we affectionately refer to as the new wing, the down-the-ramp portion. So they're making good progress. They did that in a week, so they're going to start moving over into the other parts of the building. So we're pleased. They're actually moving faster than anticipated, which is really good. So that's what's going on with the renovation. Of course, you know, we're still wrapping up demolition at two sites, Primary South, also known as Lakewood, and Winton Woods Elementary, formerly known as Winton Forest. So those are still... we're doing their soil grading, and then we're still decommissioning sewage plant at the Primary South location, so still working on that. The big news is, as of last month, we posted an ad in the paper, as is required by Ohio Revised Code, to let the public know that, as the board had moved, we were going to consider three properties surplus. So that's still... auction is still happening now. The bids are due this Thursday at noon, so we're hopeful that many people will participate in that, and that will receive those bids at the intermediate school, and we'll open those at noon this week. So that's for the three properties of the elementary school, and we just referred to Forest View, and also Kemper Heights. So those are the three properties considered surplus at this time.
And take them back through Forest View, Mr. Denny, that's the one they toured.
Yes.
I don't know if you guys remember that tour.
Hopefully, no therapy or counseling was necessary after that.
Absolutely.
That building had seen better days. It served our kids and families and staff well, but it was a different time.
But it's actually an incredible location, I think.
Yeah, it's a great location. It's 11 acres, it's zoned R2, so it's already ready to go, and its building's been cleared, and that was half the cost paid by the state of Ohio, so we appreciate that and the master plan process. So it's good. But that...
Oh, just a question. I just wanted to make sure. Kemper Heights, Forest View, well, the old Forest View. I'm going back, old school. And then Winton Forest, right?
Yes, correct. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that...
We both had that question. Thank you, Paul.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denny. Well, Mr. Smith, it is back to you for 9.01... well, no, we're at 8.05. 8.05, I'm sorry. 8.05.
Yes, Ms. Bray, with the... this is a report that we are required by law to present to the public about how expenditures are working as it relates to IDEA B, and... I mean, IDEA Part B, budget presentation and public input. Ms. Bray.
Okay.
It's amazing when technology doesn't work, people just like whisper.
Yeah.
Have you ever noticed that?
We don't want to be too loud. While she's working getting that presentation up on the screen, this is going to be for the Individuals with Disabilities Act, the IDEA Part B Budget Presentation for Public Input.
Ms. Bray, you did... you took my grandson's hand as he went into the preschool this morning, and I think my son said... he said, "What about a hug?" Instead of hugging him, he turned around and he hugged you.
He did, he did.
It's like, what about a hug? See you every day.
He was so eager to start school.
God love him.
He was a big boy. He was ready. He was ready. I said, "Are you going to say bye to Daddy? Tell Daddy you love him?" He said, "Oh."
Yeah. My son's like, "Hey, wait, what about me?"
Right.
Dr. Johnson, we don't need a screen, not unless she has it ready. We don't need a screen for personnel schedules, so would you like to move to that and then come back?
Oh, yeah, yes. Yeah, she's got it.
Okay, good.
Soon as you wanted to move.
I don't know if my mic is on, but I'll just put on my inside voice. So again, this is the budget presentation that we have to do annually, and it has to be posted for public comment. So this is for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Budget, otherwise known as IDEA. And so within this presentation, you'll see the fiscal year 2022 budget, along with the current fiscal year 2023 budget, and public participation and comments at the So this year, our fiscal year budget is almost $1 million, $995,815.29, compared to last year fiscal year 2022, $968,649.24. So it has increased a bit. And so the next slide, you'll see over time how it's decreased back to increasing. So as you can see, for fiscal year '08, 2008, we had just over $1 million, and then it decreased, increased, so it fluctuated. All the way down, you see fiscal year '21, it was $947,689, and now we're back up to almost $1 million for that budget. So within that budget by object, it's broken down into categories within that $995,000. So the bulk of it is salaries, and then retirement, along with purchasing services, and then other budgeting, which is indirect costs, which you'll see in the other slide. So by function, you'll see that most of that budget, again, it goes along with instruction. Instruction goes with the salaries, so that's the blue area. And then the orange area are the support services, along with administration, then our non-pubs, and the indirect costs, which is the other from the previous slide. So that's our budget, part of our budget, IDEA budget Part B. So as you can see, a lot of our budget is spent on instruction and salaries. Are there any questions or comments?
And just so, we know this money comes from... from where? Where does this money originate from? Is it a federal or state, or is it something that we pay from our operating budget, or how does that work?
So IDEA is federal. So Randy, am I clear with that? It's the federal?
Strictly federal funds. It nowhere covers the cost of our special ed program.
Right, that's why I wanted to just kind of balance out where...
Yeah, and this is a portion. So I know Randy had just spoke regarding some of our spinners so far this year, and with the spinners that he spoke of today was a little bit over $2 million.
That's just in contracts for support services, tuition. A lot of the special ed has to get their contracts out before school ever starts. So a lot of it is coming through the Special Ed Department to our office, getting all those contracts in place. And Mr. Smith signs a lot of them, and a real large one is Hamilton County Educational Service Center, where Mrs. Bray utilizes psychology services, speech services, occupational therapy, physical therapy. Did I miss one?
Vision hearing impaired, just a lot of other services to support our students with special needs. So that eats up a lot of our budget, and Hamilton County Educational Service Center does a really good job with helping us to support our students that need it.
Sure. And then the fluctuation, is that any rhyme or reason, or is that based on student population that we have, or is it just how much money is in the kitty at the school?
Strictly federal budget. It's not based on her children served.
Right, so it's just... it fluctuates based on nothing that we control?
Federal legislative appropriations at the federal government, yeah.
Yes.
Government says, this is what you allocate.
Right. No matter what our circumstances may or may not be, and how... but obviously, our goal is to serve all of our students to the best of our ability.
To the best of our ability.
And then that... those funding is made up out of our operating money?
I'm sorry.
Would the funding... the remainder of the funding comes from our contribution of our operating expenses? For the... like you were saying that...
You mean from the general fund?
The federal fund, yes, general fund, my bad.
This is strictly supplemental to what you have to commit through the general fund.
Right.
It would... if we didn't get this, we would have to fund another $1 million out of the general fund, so it's definitely appreciated, you know, for us to get federal funds to support the individuals with disabilities. It's a very, very... not just in our district, all districts. It's a very expensive educational program.
And it's a critical one, too. I kind of just... kind of go through this exercise just because it helps me understand, and maybe our viewers at home, or for future viewers that might watch our video, what kind of monies or what we do with our tax dollars and how we stretch it, and how important it is. So that's sort of why I wanted to touch base on that, Board.
I appreciate that, because we have a lot of students who have medical needs, nursing needs, and so that covers a lot of our funding and costs as well.
So that's one of the benefits of living in our community, that we care about all of our students, and we want to make sure all of them thrive.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have a question with respect to open enrollment. When we take... when and if we take in a child who has special needs, does monies come from other districts into our district to help with that student as well, or...
Yes, so the money... so the money does follow the student from their district, from their home district, but it really depends on capacity. So if we have the capacity with the teachers and the classrooms to serve that student like we would any other student, we would accept them. However, if we do not have capacity, like classroom size, teachers that are available...
Professional.
Correct. Depending on the needs of the student, unfortunately, we would not be able to, but they are welcome to enroll or try to enroll the following year. But yes, we would service the student like we would any other student in our district if we have capacity to do so.
Very good. Board, are there any other questions for her with respect to the IDEA?
Is this posted on our website, then? Is that how that works, so we comply with the public record of this presentation? And do people... can they respond back later, or do they have to do it just at this meeting? Or how would that work with public comments?
So typically, what happens is, we have to post the presentation in the newspaper several weeks prior to this presentation, so the public has prior notice that we are presenting this, to give them the opportunity to be here and to ask questions.
Okay. I just wondered. I wanted to make sure in case somebody... we have a... don't have a full house quite of people that might ask, but just in case somebody did have a question later. I guess they wouldn't contact you, would they?
Yes, yes. And it is on file with the minutes of today's meeting.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate that presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, Superintendent's Recommendation for Personnel Schedules. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The recommendation is to approve Schedule A, resignations; Schedule B, certificated staff; Schedule C, support staff; Schedule D, supplementals; and finally, Schedule E, leaves. Ms. Wilson can come up if you have additional questions, you know, after you make your recommendation.
Okay. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent... how do I say the right terminology? To approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith or Mrs. Wilson?
Are we having any trouble filling vacancies? Because I know... I want to ask rhetorical question, because I see all kinds of news reports about those
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm glad you asked, because that gives me an opportunity to publicly do a PSA announcement of our job opportunities. But yes, we are struggling to fill a few positions that are the result of late resignations. So we have two art positions. So if anyone knows any wonderful art teachers, we're looking for a high school art teacher, as well as a elementary grade level art teacher. We are also looking for a computer science teacher, or alternatively, we may have to pivot and find a wonderful business teacher. We need an elective class at the high school, and then we are always looking for qualified special ed teachers and paraprofessionals.
If someone's interested in that, how do they... who do they need to contact?
Oh, they can contact me directly, Courtney Wilson, or they can apply online. So on our website, under the Human Resources tab, there's a link to Frontline. And so we have an online application system called Frontline. So that's the formal way to apply, or they can send their resume to Courtney Wilson, or wilson.courtney@wintonwoods.org, or to peter.mary@wintonwoods.org, or chambers.sherry@wintonwoods.org. We're all in the HR department.
Have you...
Go ahead. No, no, please.
I did see from alternate district that they were putting something on Facebook, soliciting jobs, a variety of positions, and they had an onsite... they were having people like a... not a job fair, but similar to that, to come onsite to apply. And I think some of the positions... I think we have a lot of people that live in our community that do work within our district, maybe not necessarily teachers or some of those, but I wondered if we had reached out locally as well? I think... did you have a booth at the parade, the family reunion last Saturday?
Yes, yes.
To get some candidates?
I was going to ask how that went. That was what my question was going to be. How did that go?
Well, so unfortunately, we were next to competition this year.
Yes, CPS.
Last year, we were in a great spot, and we had at least a dozen people sign up, and out of that dozen, we probably hired about three or four people. This year, we had five people sign up. And so... and unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there this year, but we're going to try again next year, and our efforts are ongoing.
Right.
So we will do whatever it takes to be right-staffed, and we'll continue the process. But yes, we've done in-house recruiting. We've had... we have open interviews for transportation, where people... you know, you don't have to schedule an appointment. It's literally an open interview. They can come in any day, Monday through Friday, and say, "I'd like to be interviewed" for transportation specifically. Yep, so if you know anyone, just send them my way, please.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mrs. Wilson. Board, are there any other questions at this time with regards to the personnel schedules? Seeing... Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith? Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.02, which is the Food Service Worker Salary Schedule. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, so what you have before you is a proposal to increase the food server lead service pay. Mark Doctor brought this to our attention. He did a survey of surrounding districts, and we recognized that we were underpaying our lead food service workers. And food service is unique in that it is not general fund, so this is not something that impacts taxpayers directly. So this proposal is to increase the pay for lead food service workers.
Thank you. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the classified salary schedule for food
I'd like to make a motion to approve the classified salary schedule for food service workers effective July 1st, 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mrs. Wilson with regards to this salary schedule?
Since we're doing this as of July 1st, there will be retro pay involved with these people?
They didn't come back until August.
There'll be a little bit.
Yeah, so.
Just for when they worked a little in the summer, those that worked in the summer then?
If it applies.
If they had the, they would be retro paid, those that maybe did the summer school, you know, since this is July the 1st. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Seymour?
Yes, and it's all documented through our time clock system, so we'll be able to adjust the pay backwards.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the Supplemental Salary Schedule Academic. And I guess that's back to you, Mr. Smith, okay?
Yeah, the recommendation, Dr. Johnson and Board, is to approve the Supplemental Salary Schedule Academic Teaching and Learning Department, and that's effective August 1st.
Yes, please, let's put a motion on the floor, then we'll ask any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Supplemental Salary Schedule for the Academic Teaching and Learning Department effective August 1st, 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions at this time?
Is this different than it had been in the past? Is there any differences that we should notice? Because I know we've had this program, the supplementals for.
So this is just, this was a request by Dr. Martin from the Teaching and Learning Department to add an ESL lead for the elementary grade band. So we currently have a district ESL coordinator, which is Gary Giblin. He does a wonderful job with the compliance piece. However, he also is a load-bearing teacher and has to also teach during the day. So part of what Dr. Martin's recommendation is, is to have someone onsite that during PD days and staff meetings could sort of take the lead on that campus for the ESL, you know, PD and, and compliance pieces that Mr. Giblin could sort of delegate and work collaboratively with that person. And so this is adding that position. It wasn't previously there.
Okay, so that's the main change?
Yes.
Okay, and are the percentages any different, or are they?
No, everything else is what, what you are accustomed to.
So I was going to say, the percentages that we're looking at here are the percentages of their salary is what they're then paid.
Yes, and that's no different than in the past. What the change is, the ESL.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions regarding the supplemental or the substitute salary, supplemental salary schedule, I'm sorry? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.04, which is the Substitute Salary Schedule, and Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
What is before you is something that you do annually, which is approve the substitute rates for each department. And so these, Mr. Seymour has just added the 2% to the prior sub-rate to help us to remain competitive.
Yes, please, board a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Substitute Salary Schedule effective August 1st, 2022 as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Wilson. The next item on the agenda is 9.05, which is the List of Schools Declared as Impractical to Provide Pupil Transportation for the 2022-2023 School Year. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, every year there are schools outside of the zone that are really too far outside of our region to transfer kid, transport kids appropriately, like you would see something like Baton or Central Montessori Academy. Those are really too far outside of the region. And so we have to come back with a list of schools declared as impractical to provide pupil trans, to provide pupil transportation, excuse me. And Mr. Denny, you want to give more information on this one?
Thanks again, Mr. Smith. Good evening again, Board. So you should have before you a list of schools that are to be declared impractical, or we would request your consideration for such. And I'll just kind of go over the, the, the general idea and sort of the rules of how this actually functions. It's all defined by Ohio Revised Code, so this isn't Winton Woods City School District policy. This comes from state law. And essentially what they do is they say, okay, from the student's home school, they draw a 30-minute drive radius around that school. So if you can drive for 30 minutes, and this is all concerning non-public schools, by the way, if you can drive for 30 minutes and reach that school during the time in which you would normally be driving, so it's being the morning during rush hour or during the afternoon, anytime school, you know, when the school buses are rolling, basically, when, when schools are, are going through arrival or dismissal. And if you can reach that school within 30 minutes, then the district is actually required to transport any student living in our district who attends that non-public school. So that's the basic premise behind it. Now, there's some caveats that you get into. So the list that you see is all of those schools have been declared impractical. So they're all within 30 minutes. But what I think might be ilus, maybe a good illustration is if I give you a couple of examples, I give you an example and a non-exemple. So you'll see LaSalle is on the list. There's a handful of students that live within our district who are enrolled and attend LaSalle High School. We provide high school busing for our students, therefore, we must provide high school busing for theirs. It's within 30 minutes, so we should transport. The problem is, there aren't enough students there to justify a whole school bus, and we don't have enough drivers to run vans or things of that nature. So there's a calculation that the district engages in that determines financially, does it make any sense? Well, first of all, can we do it? Secondly, financially, does it make sense? So, so that's an example of one that's on the list and that's impractical, and that's why. An example of a, a school that is not on that list that we, that is within 30 minutes that we do transport to is St. X or Roger Bacon. Those are both examples. They're within 30 minutes. We have a lot of students that live within the district that go there. And there's so many students that go there from our district that we have to assign a bus to take them. So there is a Roger Bacon-St. X bus that we deploy every day. In fact, there might be two. I'd have to check that. There's at least one. And it does vary somewhat year to year. Another example of a school that's not within 30 minutes that we do have students enrolled in is Moeller. There are a lot of students that go to Moeller High School, but because it's outside 30 minutes, state law does not require, nor does any district policy, require us to transport to that school. So those are some examples and non-examples. The other caveat that's important is, and this is really good information for students who have, families who have students who attend non-public schools, is even though your school may have been declared impractical, you still have recourse. There is something called payment in lieu of. So if the district determines that we can't transport you because of our own fleet restrictions or financial constraints, then you as, as that family are entitled to apply to receive a reimbursement from the district. We don't set the rate, the state does. I believe it's gone up to, is it, it's higher this year?
Seven hundred and something.
Seven, yeah, it used to be like 400. Now it's quite a bit higher.
For the entire year, though.
For the entire year. And then we ask that anyone that's interested in that, please apply by June 1st. But that, that is something that is an, an opportunity for families to help defray the cost of what, under state law is actually a district responsibility. But there's also some understanding in the eyes of the state that districts don't have unlimited resources. So that's, that kind of an overview of the schools declared impractical part.
So if this, if somebody's already missed that June 1st deadline, it's kind of too late to apply because it's already August?
That, yes, this is, that would be last fiscal year, so they've got until June 1 of this year to apply for this year if they have a student who attends a school that's been declared impractical. Yeah, yes, ma'am. It's a good que, good question.
You can appeal to the state, but.
You, you can appeal to the state, yeah. That's a good, that's a good point Mr. Smith just made.
Very good. Thank you so much. Board, a motion is in order. Do you have anything else to add to that?
No, ma'am, no, thank you very much.
A motion is in order, please. I should have done that first.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of schools declared as impractical to provide pup, pupil transportation for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
It's been motioned.
I'll second.
Thank you. We've already asked a few questions a little before we got the motion on the floor, but are there any other questions at this time?
One other thing I'd like to add, Dr. Johnson, you, the, my office receives calls regularly that you're not transporting my kid. And when we go through the formula that Mr. Denny just explained about the 30-minute opportunity, then the parents are saying, hey, I understand. But they still seem to be a little bit frustrated because they assume that they'll get that transportation opportunity, which in fact, they can't.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I mean, you've got two students going to one school. You can't take a, whatever, a 45-passenger, 40-passenger bus for two people. It just doesn't make sense with the cost of gas and, you know, just wearing tear on the bus, so makes perfect sense. Okay, if there aren't any other questions at this time, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Denny for that presentation. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is the Board of Education Reports or the Legislative Report. Mrs. Kuhn, you have the floor.
Thank you. You find on your desks copies of the report, and they were also emailed to you as well. But just a couple pieces that I think are really important to review. The school district is following the Center for Disease Control and Prevention regarding COVID and, and the safety precautions that they employ. The district is keenly aware and wants to keep all of our students safe and secure, so those are in place. Is there anything specific about the CDC that you think is important that?
No, but there'll be some new guidelines that are scheduled to come out on Friday, this Friday.
You have any idea what they are, or you don't know?
It's a secret.
Any update on monkeypox? Nothing coming down yet for that?
Well, they were talking about how many cases were in, in the Hamilton County area, Doc. And at this point, the way they're talking about how people are contact, getting, you know, contracting it is, is kind of interesting. But there's nothing, on the bottles, when you see the, the way they're doing the vaccines, it says smallpox and monkeypox on there. So I don't know the difference in the two, but it must have the same kind of effect on, but it's usually like children at this point. So I don't know what the adult population is, what's happening on that end. But as soon as it comes to a district near you, I will definitely let you know where we stand.
Thank you.
And then one other thing, kind of dealing with that as far as school safety. There were some grants that the state gave out a little while ago, and I think we did get one of those grants, but they're having a round two of which will apply, and they have, I didn't print out all 96 pages. I did print out four, just so you kind of see, but I did include that as an attachment so you can look at if you really want to read 96 pages of these. But the school district does recognize the importance of trying to get as much money, funding from the state to provide services in this very important capacity for safety. I don't know, if you have anything else to add to that thought?
No, these are two really, you know, hot topics that are happening all over the country, so we'll see.
And then you can look through and see if anything else catches your eye. If you do go to the OSBA, which is the source of this information, it's very helpful. And then that can click onto some of those links as well, provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, which is the Great Oaks Career Technical Report. Mr. Birdy, you have the floor.
I sent an email out to everybody with my normal documents on the last meeting that we had in August. They did start school today as well, so the Spotlight on Student Report doesn't really have anything, there are not many students or anything in it. So I think the most important thing that we'll have to figure out at some point is the, my current term as the Winton Woods representative ends at the end of this year. So we'll just have to decide who's going to continue to do that, whether it's me or someone else who's on the board, as of January.
At the end of the calendar?
Yeah, at the end of the calendar, so.
So December 2023, right?
December of 2022.
2022, this year.
Yeah, it ends. So we, we have to appoint somebody as of January 1st, 2023.
I really had that all in my mind for 2023. I'm like, oh, we've got some time, we're good. No, we, well, I mean, we do.
Well, we still got time.
Not like what I thought we had.
We got months.
I thought we had 12 months.
No, we still got a few months.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, we will have that discussion, Board, maybe at our next work session to talk about that a little bit, and maybe, Mr. Birdy, you could give us a little clip on what that job entails and see whether we rouse any interest there. So thank you very much for that. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, which is the Delegate and Alternate Delegate at the Annual OSBA Conference, which is held at the, in Columbus, Ohio for the Capitol Conference from November the 13th through the 15th, 2022. And I have asked, and they have accepted, Mr. Jeff Birdy is going to be the delegate, and Mrs. Deborah Bryant is going to be the alternate delegate. And they both have already agreed to do that, so that's what it will be. So thank you very much, Mr. Birdy, for stepping up and doing that for us. And Mrs. Bryant has already agreed, so. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is 11.02, which is a special meeting for Monday, August the 29th at 6:30 PM at the Winton Woods Intermediate Building at the Media Center at 825 Way Cross Road. The purpose of this special meeting is an executive session concerning the investigation of complaint against a public employee. And Board, I need a motion to approve that meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a special meeting to be held August 29th, 2022 at 6:30 PM at the venue at the Winton Woods Intermediate School, the Media Center that's located at 825 Way Cross Road for the purpose of investigation of complaint against a public employee.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. The only comment that we didn't say is that no action will be taken at this meeting. We will just have a meeting. So if there's nothing else to add to that, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is comments from the members of the Board of Education, Superintendent and Treasurer. So Mr. Brandon Smith, we'll go with you first. Do you have anything that you would like to state at this time?
Welcome back, have a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mrs. Kuhn?
Great to welcome all of our students and our faculty, our staff back to school. It's exciting to see, get off to a fresh start. I did, just want to reinforce the district's proactive ability to, to help our parents. We were very welcoming to the students when they got here, try to make it as easy of a transition to come back to school. We are keenly, I think we've made advancements on our busing from last year to this year. I'm sure there's still things we're going to continue to work out, and I would encourage parents to reach out to the Transportation Department. And perhaps, who else would they ask if, if they couldn't reach the Transportation Department? Do you have any other? That was, I did hear that, so I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I did hear people say they couldn't reach the Transportation Department.
Superintendent's Office, as usual.
You, you heard him.
Do it anyway.
Well, that's true.
It's because it's Jordan.
Yeah, that's true. Well, Transportation or Mr. Smith, one of us many hats, so I appreciate. But that just emphasizes the importance to our community. It goes right up the ladder to the top, so that's really important. So thank you very much. Welcome back to school.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. Mr. Birdy?
I did get to spend some time here this morning welcoming the, the new students and that, and that was fun. And I was over at the preschool for a little while as well, as I said, Mrs. Bray, got to walk my grandson into the building. So that, you know, it was just a fun time to see. Most of the students were very happy. You had a couple that were kind of hesitant, didn't want to do it, but the staff was great. But the staff was great as far as, you know, going to those students, encouraging them and welcoming them and trying to get them, you know, to come into the building. And it was, it was great to watch. I did ask the administrators here, some of the administrators that I talked to about the transportation, and they said it was, you know, night and day compared to last year as far as how things were working. So thank you to everybody, Mr. Denny, the Transportation Department involved in that, because it, I think there was a huge, huge improvement for everybody, so thank you for that.
Is that who that was? Barb, what's her? Barb Barnacle, we have her to thank for. And actually, as I understood, the bus schedules went out on August the 10th, I think, the day of the convocation or the day before. Yeah, so that was a big change even there, so. All right, very good. Mr. Seymour?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Smith, Superintendent Smith?
Yes, first game of the, it was very exciting, not necessarily the game, but the turnout by the community for the open house, where they modified their open house to make it part of the game and experience and all the tents and all the fanfare. It was absolutely wonderful. So the North Campus folks did an incredible job. And then we were invited to be part of the Black Family Reunion Parade. It was an incredible turnout. We had, I guess, the largest turnout of any community, even communities in the city. So all of the administrators participated, all cheerleaders, football players, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And according to one of the people that were the judges, the Winton Woods Band actually won the best band competition. So we were excited, and it gives us a little more, you know, bragging rights out there because when you have a championship football team, sometimes all the fanfare goes to them. And I think it's good to kind of spread the love all the way through. We have a good contest coming up this week against Walnut, at Walnut, and we'll get a chance to see two bands compete. We hope that everybody that's listening, whenever we have competition, athletic competitions, we hope that they have the, I guess, the resources to bring both bands. I think it just makes it more exciting as a halftime event. So continue on. Go Warriors!
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I would just like to say that the first day of school was today, and we want to welcome all of our Winton Woods Warriors back. And happy first day of school to the students, staff, and teachers and administrators. I'd also like to thank everyone who had a part in putting together the professional development for our staff the weeks, the days before school actually started, leading up to the convocation. I thought the convocation was very supercharged, and I enjoyed it. And it seemed as though the people that were there enjoyed it as well. And we're gonna get on beat. That's what Mr. Smith told us to, you know, catch the beat. So we're, you know, for those of us who are rhythm-challenged, you guys just help us rock, okay? Because we want to be on beat, too. So also, the tailgate activities for the football this past Friday night was really explosive. I really enjoyed it, brought my family out. They enjoyed it. My grandson thinks he's part of Winton Woods, but he's not. He, he, his soul is here, right? He lives in another district, right?
But you're finally getting to see that blue and green, see what we're talking about.
Yeah, we are seeing more and more blue and green in the stadium, and that is wonderful to see. It just shows that warrior pride. We did beat Troutwood-Madison, which that's always fun, you know, when you win. Also, the first day of school rallies were a big success. And just to encourage all of the students, the staff, the teachers, the administrators, to start strong and finish strong, you know? And that's what it's all about, and to encourage them just to kind of keep putting one foot in front of the other when it gets difficult. Just keep going, so it's really exciting. Again, I want to say a special thank you. I don't think I say thank you often enough to this organization, which is the Winton Woods Educational Foundation. Not to call somebody out, but they were right there at our convocation, giving away money to our teachers and our staff to do a better job or to help them supplement what they already do in the classrooms and the funds for the 2022-2023 school year. And I can say that the district appreciates this organization, and the Board appreciates what they do, what they currently do and what they have done in the past. And I forget the number, but she did give us a number of how much they had donated over the years, and it was pretty significant. So I just want to say a special thank you to that organization and to let them know that we all appreciate them. Also, Mr. Smith mentioned the band having gotten the recognition as, you know, the marching band. And that just goes to show the work that they're putting in, their skills, perfecting their skills with their marching and representing excellence for the district, you know? And every time we go out, if we're represented with excellence, that's how people began to see, hey, what's going on over there? So we appreciate the staff that works with, the teachers that worked with the band to make that happen, Mrs. Ashbrook and her team. Also, just as a last thought here, want to invite everyone, under the sound of my voice, to come out to support our students, whether it's in athletics, whether it's academics, whether it's with the band, and join us in our efforts to continue to build the Winton Woods City School District to become the best district in this area and in this region. We've got a lot to be proud about, and I think that if we don't tell our own story, then it won't get told. So just keep letting people know what we're doing and what we're doing good. And those things that we're not doing so good, tell us about that, too, so that we can start working on those as well. So that's all I have at this time. I do not think that, well, I'm pretty sure we do not have a reason to go into executive session tonight. So moving on to the last item is item 1401, where I'd like to say thank you for coming to the meeting tonight of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, August the 22nd, 2022. Take care of yourself and your loved ones. Stay safe and healthy until we meet again.